Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rana. And if you read the day newspaper, I guess you realize that election season is starting. Greg Smith had an article in Saturday's paper about upcoming nominating conventions. And it just kind of started the conversation a little bit about November's municipal elections. And as it turns out, the Green Party, I wouldn't say we necessarily have more going on right now than the major parties, but we have more that's going on publicly than the major parties. And in fact, tomorrow, we are having a nominating convention, the first one of two, in which we plan to nominate Board of Education candidates. That'll be tomorrow at the Fresh Urban Farm on Mercer Street at 6:30 PM. So anyone can come who is interested in it. But with that in mind, my guest tonight is Eric Corion. And I'm sure all of you who watch the show know Myrna Martinez. She's a Green Party member who's been on the Board of Education for two terms now. And she is planning to run for a third term. Eric is also planning to run on the Green Party line for Board of Education. And though it is not 100% official yet, he is part of the slate that we will be presenting tomorrow night. So since he might not be quite as known around town as Myrna, we thought it would be great to have Eric on the show. So, welcome.
Thank you, Rana. Thank you for having me here and inviting me for Thinking Green. This is an amazing opportunity for the community to know me well. And I thank you for that. And I thank the Green Party for that, too.
Well, I guess my first question for you is, what brought you to New London? And how long have you been here? What are your ties to our city?
So what brought me here was actually education. I was finishing my 10th grade in Puerto Rico. I went to a magnet school for theater and fine arts. And growing in the island, we kind of are Americanized on television. And I was always watching like High School Musical and all those sketches that show theater in high school here. And I said, I'm like, I want to be an actor. But for that, I need to have, I need to know English. And I need to live in the United States for being part of a drama club. So my grandmother already lived here. She has some health problems that they were not kind of like, have like medical advancements in Puerto Rico for that. So she had to move here with an uncle of mine that had lived here since the 80s, early 80s. So I moved with her. I moved in with her and I went to New London High School. Unfortunately, New London High School didn't have a drama club or a theater department at that time. I don't think they still don't have a theater department, but they do have a drama club right now. So I'm really, I'm really proud of that. I actually asked them to be volunteer on that after-school program and show my talent. And I have a bachelor's degree from University of the Sacred Heart in Puerto Rico of theater with a minor in education.
So I first met you when you were, had gotten involved with Hearing Youth Voices pretty much at the beginning of that organization. So can you talk a little bit about that experience and how that affected you?
For sure. So every summer, I would come volunteer as a teacher assistant in New London High School. And I was always involved with New London Youth Affairs as a volunteer. And they were talking to me about opportunities. We're connecting with a nonprofit organization that was recently starting in town for improving education. And as a person that was, that came from New London, graduated from New London High School and experienced the issues that were there from a part, like as a student, and as a person that was within already, like kind of professionally thinking about becoming a teacher or an educator, I was like, oh, I'm interested in that. And Laura Berfing invited me to the first meeting to set up what's known as Hearing Your Voices. And I got involved with them since day one. And you know, I always believed that with a better school comes a better community. And with a better community comes a better future for everybody. So I always thought that education was the key. And Hearing Your Voices was fighting for what's right for students, right? We were putting the voices of our youth in New London on the top. And adults were respecting that. And adults were following us. And they were excited about to learn what the youth had to say about their school because they're the ones that actually go through the system, right? And I was a youth at the time that I was in Hearing Your Voices, too. So yeah, that was really an important life of my leadership pipeline kind of thing that I went in town. If it wasn't for Hearing Your Voices, I probably would not be here today.
And Hearing Youth Voices, I remember going to some of the early presentations at the library, really did some research on some topics. And I don't remember, I know that some of the zero tolerance discipline was one of the issues. But what other things did Hearing Youth Voices explore?
Credit loss in the school system, specifically in New London High School. There were people losing credit just because of absences that they didn't actually need an excuse, right? You know, students that were late for school because they had to bring in their brother or sister to school first before they even went to school. And because their parents would work really early morning shifts and they were not able to bring their younger child to the school. Their brothers, the elders in the family, have to take care of that. And you know, the school doesn't really see those as valid excuses. So we fought for, we created a campaign to educate the people that this is happening in our town and to take a shift within the policies in school. And presented that, at that summer, that the final presentation was done to the Board of Ed. I wasn't here, but the campaign was accepted by the Board of Ed. And a lot of positive changes happened to the policy.
And one of the things I remember Hearing Youth Voices did was look at policies in the New London schools and in some of the surrounding communities and found that for some things, New London was really being much more harsh on its students than East Lime or some of the other school districts.
That's correct. A lot of schools already have policies in places. Ledger, Grant, Norwich already have absences and credit loss policies in place. But we didn't. And we actually, when we presented, we created, I remember we could present it as a shard to the Board of Ed. We kind of like Ledger, check, Grant, check, Norwich, check, New London X. Because we didn't have anything for that. And the policies were not really being clear. Another interesting thing that was, a lot of the people that were Latinos and African-Americans were not getting notified that they were going to lose credit compared to their other peers that were getting notified that they were going to lose credit. So a lot of people, there was kind of like unfairness there, right? Like people getting excuses and people getting notifications about, you're going to lose credit. You have to make this up, try to do after-school programs, try to do this. But all the people were not being told that. And that's an aspect that we never actually got into the roots, like why did that happen? But those are some interesting topics that if we actually look at our education system as a, as a system of oppression, like you will see some interesting stuff happening in our schools, too.
Well, it's interesting that you said that some people weren't finding out about the credit loss. So what was happening to them? They were getting to the end of the year and just getting failures?
That's correct. I remember we had a case of someone that learned that they were not going to graduate in like the last, the last month of school. And you know, those are some cases that you get in shock and you're like, whoa, what? What's happening? So what happened to you? And when you really look at their stories, our students with good grades. They were not students with failing in class. Because we were not fighting for people that were absent just because they want to have fun or they want to have a day at the park or they just want to, they just want to sleep in at home. They were good students that were losing, they were losing credit just because of simple stuff. As I have to bring my young sister in school and I was late to a class.
And then there was no way of really making that up in time to graduate or advance to the next class?
That's correct. We were, I think we were able to advocate for that student to take some summer classes and graduate on time. So I believe they graduated on time and then just make the credits up on the summer. But you know, like who knows up before her who went through that process, too, right? Because Hearing Your Voices haven't, haven't been here before. Only we started in 2012. So it's kind of interesting to look back on those cases and see who many people didn't actually make it or who actually dropped out of school. So it's like, it's sad because our education system, it's set up in a way like not, not everybody's going to succeed. And I noticed, I noticed that when I was in school. And I actually got to notice that even in my own island in Puerto Rico, when I was in college. Like not everybody is set up to succeed. And it's kind of sad to see that. And that's, that's what I believe, like, you know, seeing it as a person that actually went through the system, who knows how the educational system works here, how we have made positive changes. And I actually believe that if we don't involve the community in those changes and we don't create like participatory actions to find positive ways to make shifts and make everybody graduate, like we want everybody to graduate. And I think that was the name of our campaign, we want to graduate.
And just as a general thing, dropout rates and pushout rates seem like they're often higher in city school districts than they are in some of the surrounding towns?
And also it's higher on the Latino and African-American communities. And when you look at those cases, it's because people have to drop out to work and actually make some money for the family. Because a lot of people don't know, but a lot of, a lot of our communities, we are, we have this like kind of like social rule that we have to take care of each other, too, right? So I know, personally, I know even people in Puerto Rico and in New London, people have to drop out just because they wanted to be independent, just because they wanted to help their family, too. Like they want to put some money on the table. And that's how we see people ending up as cashiers with not professional education, with not finishing their high school. And I know, personally, I know friends that have, we're lucky to have in our town systems like adult education where they can finish those. But like, that's really important, right? Like going through the whole process of high school is not the same as getting an equivalent of a high school diploma than going to the high, to the diploma, high school itself. So it's kind of interesting.
And more and more, actually, for the long term, to get jobs, the high school diploma is just the start. Either you need a college degree or you need to have some kind of trade or special skill. Just a high school diploma doesn't really get you far now.
That's correct.
It doesn't allow an income that's livable. So you know, and I wasn't necessarily going to ask about this, but right now, there seems to be not necessarily bad feeling, but some conflict between like my generation, the boomer generation, and the millennial generation. Because the perception is, and probably the reality, too, the young people have, today have a lot fewer opportunities than we did 50 years ago. So do you see that? Do you see that people in your age group feel as though they're really limited?
I believe we are, but I don't blame any generation for this. I have, I'm a millennial, but I have appreciated other generations for the good. Because even like, I believe like sometimes us millennials are doing things that are not, I don't think they're the right thing for the future, right? Like we were talking earlier about jobs getting eliminated because they're getting automatized. And most of this technology has been done by young engineers, computer engineers, right? And it's kind of like interesting, like how we're saying that, oh, no, we don't have nice jobs and we cannot afford a house because of this past generation. When in reality, it's because of a system that's in place, right? And when I talk about a system, it's this whole thing that's out there and kind of like, you know, like there are not enough jobs because of this reason. There's always a reason for things. And I don't specifically think it was the baby boomers. Because I believe the baby boomers had their own struggle when they were growing up, too. But it's kind of funny, too, like how to see some baby boomers blaming, blaming our generation, too.
That's true, too.
Like, oh, you guys don't buy a house because you're spending too much money on an avocado spread. That's one of the things that I read. And I'm like, wait, what? So there's, it's a complex thing to, to talk about. And it's a, a lot of researchers right now are like trying to figure out like, what's, what's the thing? And we're trying to actually, I'm a part of the Green Youth Group here in New London. And we're trying to set up like a debate for that. So I would love to have you in our table to, to have that debate about millennials and baby boomers. But not actually as a, as a debate, as a competition. But I propose that it's a debate for like coming to agreements, like actually like speaking about the issues and how did we got there, talking about like politically, economically, and how we can find positive changes within our community. But I believe like every generation has had their struggle. And as millennials and as persons of the belief in innovation, we're going to find our way of.
Well, I think it is interesting. You mentioned like where we came from. And I, I do think that that's been a real problem with the boomer generation. You know, in the 1950s and 60s, it was a Cold War. And you really didn't know whether the world was still going to be around when, when you grew up, which actually is the same insecurity that millennials have now, in a little different shape. But at the same time, we had a sense of, well, let's just make our lives better today. So I think that the boomer generation was pretty good at getting civil rights, getting women's rights, getting gay rights. Because if you look at what the 60s were like, 50s and 60s, they were much more repressed. So I think the boomers were pretty good with that. But we also had the sense that natural resources were infinite and we didn't have to conserve and we could just kind of live like there's no tomorrow. And so we left, we've left a pretty mixed legacy.
Yeah. No, I don't have that. I wake up every morning and I'm like thinking about recycling. I'm thinking about this and how can I make the world a better place, kind of thing. And so it's like, kind of like a, an anxiety that one, at least for me as a millennial, I wake up every day and thinking about like, also what's going to happen tomorrow? Like I, I know resources, natural resources are not, are not unlimited. And we have to take care of them. But like you said, like I think an important thing that baby boomers did have and we don't have, our classes like economy in our schools, logic, moral, ethics, environmental sciences, agriculture, industrial work, building things in school, that doesn't happen here in New London. I remember like in 2010, at least we have like a lot of cooking classes. We had wood workshops. And we had a really good thing that actually as a millennial helped me a lot. We were fixing up computers, used computers that we got from Electric Boat. They donated it. And we will fix them and give them to nonprofit organizations. And New London High School doesn't have that program anymore.
I used to do some of that stuff when I worked for Head Start. I'd get friends of mine to donate computers and fix them out and give them to families. And, but you know, and that's really kind of important. Because when you think about the job picture in the future, you know, when you throw things away, when they get broken and buy a new one, that new one can be made anywhere. And more and more of these things are manufactured in China and the Indian subcontinent, places where the wages are very depressed. But for maintenance, like to get a television or a computer or your plumbing or electricity repaired, that cannot be outsourced. I mean, you need to find local people to do that maintenance work. And it seems as though teaching people how to do that kind of job would be a good way to increase job security.
It is. And I'm teaching life skills, too. Because within fixing a computer, there's a lot of patience and a lot of tools that you need to learn, right? Like it's, it's an educational process at the same time that you're learning how to fix your own things. And that's not happening in our school nowadays. And I feel like we're lacking that finances classes, how can we save for college? How can we open a bank account? Like a lot of, of young people like around my age don't know how to do that. And a lot of people, baby boomers specifically, in social media, when there's any new studies that millennials don't know how to buy a property, are like, oh, their parents should have taught you that. Oh, their parents didn't do the right thing. But it's like, I don't believe like that, that should happen at home. But not everybody had the privilege of having their mom and that all the time at home. I didn't. My, my mom worked as a single mother with my sister who's there and my brother. And she didn't actually finish high school. So it's interesting on seeing like how some people just make assumptions, like everybody had their, the same opportunities as them. When in reality, everybody's life is different. Every family is different.
And what I found, well, when I was working for Head Start, is that the low-income families, whether they're two-parent or single-parent families, the jobs that these, you know, the parents are doing are terrible shifts. Whether you work in retail or at a nursing home or in the casino, you might have a weird shift and not be home on a schedule that allows you to spend a lot of time with your kids. And you know, it was frustrating for me as a teacher that a lot of families didn't have family meals together. So in Head Start, we had family-style meals. And that some of the young kids just didn't even know about sitting down and having a conversation and serving themselves. They were used to picking up the food and walking around with it. And it was really frustrating for me. But then I figured out why that was true. It was because they were with a different relative every night, because mom worked second shift. And there was no consistency in the afternoon routine because of the work schedules.
It's interesting that you just said that and I get tears in my eyes. Because I had the same experience. I was, my, my job before Fresh was as a developer of a program initiative in my college that I graduated from. And it was for creating a food pantry and a soup kitchen. And we call it comesa, which is like community table in Spanish. And there was, in my, my last day of work there, we had like a small celebration for like a first year anniversary. And a student, actually a college student, on her second year of college, stood up and said like, I'm thankful not for the food, but for the family that I got to share the food with. And I got, I get goosebumps every time I said that. And like those humans' interaction like happens in Head Start.
Yeah.
Happening even in college. Like you see, you see college students that are not getting food at the school in Puerto Rico. And you get the same thing, like students here not getting, getting food at school only, but not having that interaction with their family. And those, that's what I say like as a millennial, like I think like, those personal connections that we are kind of getting rid of, because it's my generation, I admitted. My generation is most on their phones. And we can see that right there with my cousin and my sister. We're, we're lacking that, those humans' interactions, which are really important. I can understand email makes everything easier, a text message does everything easier, a phone call does everything easier. But there's not a one-on-one. There's not that, that human interaction that we're having right now. I mean, I've seen TV interviews where they're just like on a Skype and then the presenter is at the table.
Right.
You know, like we're lacking, my generation is kind of lacking that. And I think that's really important. We should actually bring that back.
Yes. It's hard to bring it back. Although I have to say, there isn't one tomorrow. But the community meals, I mean, I've got to put in a pitch for the community meals every Wednesday at Benidover. Because of the end of school tomorrow, they're not having one. But they will be continuing again through the summer. And it's really, people often say have not great attitudes towards the New London schools for good reasons or not-so-good reasons. But this is something that's happening in New London that's just pretty extraordinary, that the students are getting real food that's cooked by people who care about quality. And once a week, the whole community is being invited in to eat together. And I just hope that people who complain about the schools and who are very quick to criticize the schools, that they at least come to these dinners and realize that the schools are starting to invite the community in. I don't think the New London schools have always been very good at that. But I think this is a good step in the right direction.
It is. I actually work with Fresh, the mobile food pantry. And we give vouchers to some of the families to, they can have like a warm meal and actually connect to the community. And it has been a positive experience, well, for the people that go to community meals and for the people that actually go to the mobile food pantry and can get their, get their groceries at the mobile food pantry from Jimmy Moore and then go right away for Benidovers to get a warm meal, because not everybody have that.
Yeah. And really, the food is almost always really good. And it's not necessarily the kind of thing you would cook at home. And it's very reflective of the different cultures of the students in the school. It's really amazing.
And I think that's a really important thing. We live in a diverse community here in New London and having that option, right? Like those culturally appropriate menus are really important. Because that, we, we don't even like, we have different restaurants. But like coming out from New London Public School to have every, every week, a different menu that's culturally appropriate to a community in our town. And having people to experience other cultures through food, too, that's a really important connection.
That is. And I have to admit, there have been times I've looked at the menu and I have to look something up in the dictionary because I don't know what they're serving. So yeah, but I highly recommend it. It's $5. It's well-spent. You really can't, couldn't cook your own meal for that amount of money. And the community is good. You do see a lot of the same people every week who kind of just get hooked on, on doing it.
Yeah. What I will encourage is the community to actually, when they go to one of those community meals, pay for, pay, pay for someone else, too. Buy some credit and leave it there so we can, we're able to provide other families the same benefit.
Yes. And that's, so I guess we can move on a little bit now to what you're doing now with Fresh New London. So maybe talk about what, what your job is and what attracted you to Fresh.
So I moved to Fresh about a year ago. It's a year and three months I have been working at Fresh. And actually moved back to New London thanks to Fresh and the opportunity to work with them. We're coming from New London. I finished my last year with Hearing Your Voices in 2014. Went back to college in Puerto Rico to finish my bachelor's degree. And then I stayed one more year at San Amico Vista doing the program development for the pantry and food kitchen in, in the college. And I was looking for opportunities to come back to New London. Because I love, I love this town, honestly. We, I call it the city that has it all. Because we have a theater, we have a, the theater not only plays, but have movies sometimes. We have a beach, we have parks, we have forests, we have the arboretum, we have three colleges. And it's a really diverse town, full of history, art, and diversity. And I wanted to come back because I love this town so much. And that is, I was looking for opportunities to move back. And one that stepped up was, was Fresh. And I remember when I applied and I had my interview, I was very honest. I'm like, I have experience in organizing and teaching and creating curriculum, but I have no experience in growing food. And I'm being honest, because it says that they're looking for someone that actually have knowledge and expertise on growing food. And I'm like, I'm here on my Skype interview from the living room in Puerto Rico. And I'm like, I don't know how to grow food, but I would love to learn. And I told them like I had been doing this kind of work in Puerto Rico with the soup, soup kitchen, the food pantry, and the food bank. And looking for resources for students that had enough money for tuition and food, but didn't have enough money for housing and were sleeping in a basketball court in college. And this is happening on a college level. And so they, they hired me as their youth organizer. And I remember the first day that I just came from the airport and I actually went to New London High School because they were, they were having a presentation on the New Waller's Cafe Project and Community Garden there at the New London High School. And had a few updates on the garden network, too. So I just came right away from the airport to meet them on New London High School. And I have been doing youth organizing work there. So I recruit the youth, promote our three main programs. There was Growing Food, Empowering Youth, and Connecting the Community. Which all come together. If you really see, our youth are part of the community. We're growing food for the community. And the community is getting together through food. So like, I was inspired by that message. And I remember that one of the first things is like, Fresh more than an organization is a lifestyle, right? And those values are something that I inspire people to, to live a better life, to connect through other people. And it had, I didn't, I didn't have that growing up. And I'm having it now as an organization, connecting through the youth, educating them in different aspects of the food system and how, how it's kind of like, you know, we have to make a shift and you are part of this because of this. And you're growing food for the community and inspiring those youth. And I actually see them growing leadership the same way that I did with Hearing Your Voices and New London Youth Affairs, growing that leadership. Like I remember I said that on the interview that I wanted to be like Renita, Chelsea, and Laura, who are the founders of Hearing Your Voices. And seeing myself now in the mirror, I'm like, yes, I'm getting there.
Yeah.
And like I always tell the youth, like if, if you find and find ways to connect to the opportunity, Fresh is one of them. And if not Fresh, look for your passion and look for nonprofit organizations that are doing that kind of work that you like and connect with them. That's really important.
And food is so important. You know, one, we talked a little bit about the experiences, you know, I had working with families in Head Start. And you know, a lot of them did not have access to good food. They didn't necessarily have good cooking facilities. They didn't get fresh vegetables. The young kids, you know, some of them didn't know what ingredients were because things became, you know, came so pre-cooked and pre-prepared. And so Fresh is now kind of brilliant in terms of empowering families to like actually make choices about their food and not just be limited in what their selections are.
Yeah, it's a beautiful organization. I mean, having a community garden where you can have a plot for a summer and then learning how to grow food that summer and then next summer, you're growing it at home. It's amazing. It's seen that. And the latest thing that's happening, it's going around the garden is that it's strawberry season.
Oh, yes.
And we're having those strawberries all around the garden. Like those strawberries are wild. They grow everywhere. And seeing a youth like, oh, do you like a strawberry? And seeing a youth like, oh, do you like a strawberry? And they're like, this is not a strawberry, because it's natural strawberries. Organic strawberries are not the same shape like we get in the supermarket, right?
They taste so much better.
They are like, whoa, is there more? Is there more? So, um, seeing that happiness and that excitement just about like experience like a, a real strawberry is. They're like, wow, that's, this is just amazing. And I cannot wait to see their faces when they get those blackberries out of the bushes.
Well, you know, it's interesting because, you know, uh, we have students from Boys and Girls Club who come to the Riverside Community Garden. And there was a point last year when, uh, the wild raspberries, the wine berries, which are weeds, but they're still delicious, uh, were, were fruiting. And I had a group of maybe three or four teens. And I said, come over here. And they didn't want to eat it. They didn't know it was edible. They had never eaten a wild raspberry before. And by the time they went home, they were like, we were finding bags and they were just picking them all and taking them home.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want. We want everybody to have food, to have fresh food and to have the experience of tasting fresh food, which is really important in our community. Another thing that I, um, I kind of like helped to shape, uh, Fresh is, um, our program, Putting Culture Back Into Agriculture. Um, and it's connecting our youth, um, culture to our food system here in New London and growing, um, plants that are culturally appropriate to their communities. It started when I, I got the seeds for ajedulce, which is a kind of candy pepper that grows in Puerto Rico. Really, really sweet. And, um, I really like, kind of like got the, the sense of what really the program meant. For me, right, when, um, when I went to vacations in August, I was visiting a friend that had a plant and I was just grabbing it out of her, of the tree and eating it. And she's like, what are you doing? No, no, you don't do that. Stop. And I'm like, wait, what do you mean? And she's like, oh, you're supposed to process it and make it into sofrito. I'm like, oh no, you've never had it like this? And this is in Puerto Rico. And when she ate, she, she got one and she tasted it, I'm like, she's like, oh, whoa, wait, what is this? I'm like, it's a snack. You can eat this as a snack, because it's, it's not hot. And she's like, oh my God. So it's like, kind of like a plot twist, um, with food. She was like, wow, this is amazing. And the same thing with sofrito, I was at my abuela's home, my grandmother's home. And she had sofrito, which is made out of, um, cilantro, um, um, ajedulce and onions and garlic. Um, it's like a Puerto Rican staple that we're using any kind of meat, beans, rice, and I got a-
You use it to season everything, right?
Yeah, and I, I got a tortilla ship and I dip it into the sofrito and she was like, ¿qué tu hace? What are you doing? I'm like, abuela, you ever had this? And she tried it. She wasn't a huge fan of it. But you know, like, those are some simple, like, using sofrito, which we are used as Puerto Ricans as staple, but using it kind of as a pesto or salsa, it's really like putting like other people, um, perspective on other people, uh, help other people treat food. And seeing that connection, it was like, oh, this is what this program means. It's not actually about, uh, only growing the food, but it's actually like, what do we make with it and how can we use it?
You know, that is interesting about getting different kinds of seeds because we have people from so many cultures here. And I'm sure there are Asian vegetables that we can be eating here and that we don't. And I didn't think about that, but you know, there are some spots, empty places in New London where we could still do more growing than we are now.
They are, they are. That's what we're doing with, um, the McDonald Park Community Project, which is a, a later park that was, um, kind of like neglected around the nineties. Um, and the city came to Fresh and wanted, um, to build a community garden there. Um, we went, kind of like took a step back, we're gonna build a garden, but like actually let's find out what the community wants to see in this space. Cause it's, with this, we're fresh. None of our, our, our staff were used, um, kind of live in that area. So we actually went, um, home to, um, door to door and asked people what they wanted to see in the garden. And there were a lot of things. People wanted to have a skate park, basketball court. But mostly one of the things people wanted to grow food there. So we have now a combination of, um, growing food, kids' space and youth area, tiny houses, picnic table, a community space. It's not only a community garden, but it's a community space. And, um, we have some snack bags, uh, snack boxes, which is our, um, free food for the community. If you, you're walking by and there's a snack box around you and it says it's a snack box, take some, take something that's there, right, and eat it right away. Cause it's for you, it's for the community. And, um, we hire some youth from that community and seeing them like improving the park, getting excited about making things for kids in that neighborhood from a place that was just a concrete plot, it's, it's so beautiful.
And, and the more people use that area, of course, to, for their own recreation, the less likely it's going to become a problem spa.
That's correct. Um, with positive energy, you, you kind of kick out, um, bad energy.
Well, maybe you can talk a little bit about what kind of programs you have with the youth. And I, I'm guessing you're, you'll be starting your summer program soon.
Yeah, our summer program, um, starts on the fifth of July. Um, we're gonna have a lot of workshops this summer, so we're gonna learn about the food system. Um, we're gonna learn about the youth power and what can you change in your community. There's gonna be about communicate, a lot of about communication, like how to have positive relationship with your peers, how to do door knocking, how to talk to people, which are interactions that a lot of, of you are kind of scared, um, to do right now. So they're, they're getting skills that are not actually, um, teaching, being taught in schools, where they're getting it through, um, through us, Fresh in London. Um, and I always thank that opportunity, like to, um, for me to have that kind of power with the youth, um, to make changes in our, in our educational system, kind of like from a nonprofit way. Um, and that, that's, I think that's really important. Well, um, youth will be visiting other youth programs. We're willing about land and power. Um, we're gonna be focusing on, um, water as a limited resource. Cause a lot of people really don't really appreciate water and water is a, a resource that's-
And a governmental level as well.
Yeah.
Not just personal level.
Yeah, so it's kind of, um, really interesting seeing that, um, having that opportunity to make those changes within Fresh's curriculum and actually getting, getting to ask the youth, what do they wanna learn? What do they want to, to teach too? Cause we, we don't want, uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm the youth organizer, but I, I organize with the youth. And I want them to be who I am today and I want them to, to be the teachers, right? Um, and that's what really inspired me to be part of this organization.
Now, I was gonna ask you, um, are all the youth already enrolled in the program? Or is it, is it too late to apply or are you still taking applications?
So this week I actually got a few calls and a few emails of people that are interested, um, to be part of the organization, but applications close at seven. And we actually have only around twelve spots, um, for the summer program. And there's, there's like forty-five applicants on the list. And I started interviewing today, um, one of our youth coworkers. So yeah, it's kind of like a lot of applicants over there and a lot of people that actually want to have the experience of growing food. And I, I kind of like, kind of, I always get disappointed like, oh, I have to tell them like, we could not choose it just because of our, our, um, our staff and our resources are limited too.
So yes, so, um, so really you only accept about thirty percent of the applicants.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I wish we could hire, uh, the fifty-five applicants that we have, but I, I feel sometimes feel like I'm not enough for that. But I'm, I'm so excited about this, this program starting the fifth of July and getting out there. We're gonna be cooking, um, in Spar's Kitchen and we're gonna have like, the youth bring family recipes that connect to their, their culture and their, their life and their family. And just talk about like how this, this recipe got to you, how do you learn it? And teaching each other about our food and our cultures, that's, it's kind of gorgeous.
Now, um, well, we have quite a bit of time left, but not a huge amount. So I wanted to, um, ask you about some of the other things you were involved in. Now, last time we sat down together, you mentioned you would join the Hartford Gay Men's Chorus.
Yeah.
Tell me about that. How, do you perform often or?
Uh, we have two concerts, one in the spring, one already happened in May. And our holiday concert, which is happening in December. Uh, I've been with them, it's gonna be a year on the fall, on this fall, um, that I've been singing with them. I'm a tenor one, so don't ask me to sing here, because I cannot sing without my brothers in song. So, um, it's kind of difficult to sometimes play people like what a chorus is. Cause some people think, oh, you're a singer, like you can sing. I'm like, I cannot sing by myself. I need to sing with other people. Uh, I'm not ready for a solo. That's what I've been telling them.
Maybe next year, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. But it's a beautiful organization. You get to share, um, share Italian and actually learn how to, how to sing too at the same time, like reading music. I didn't have idea of how to read music, but now I see some notes and I know when an upper note, it's, it's in another line, that means that I need to go a little bit higher. If it's lower, I need to go lower. Um, this had an educational experience at the same time, um, because our audience, um, gets to experience me songs in Spanish. Um, last year on the holiday concert, we had songs in Spanish, Hebrew and African. And it was, um, from Kenya. Um, uh, Bet- Bet- Bethlehem, um, which is a song about Bethlehem and Jesus. So it's kind of a beautiful experience, getting, getting to know all people from all over Connecticut. Cause even if it's in Hartford, um, there's people from New London, there's people from, there, I think there's someone from, actually from New York and one from Massachusetts that traveled to sing in Hartford. And that's really important, connecting with people and getting, getting, um, getting that experience of sharing your passion as a singer with someone that just recently joined as, as myself and, and teaching, teaching each other.
Now, how long has that organization been, been around?
We celebrated our fifth anniversary on this last, this last concert.
So it's relatively new.
It is, it is. Um, our concerts get, get sold out though. Like it was, it was, it's been really positive experience for, for the chorus. We are around fifty-three members.
I was gonna ask, how many men were involved?
Yeah, it's fifty-three of us and we don't actually fit anymore on the theater that we have been using. We have been using the Athenaeum and the, and the Hartford Athenaeum Museum. And we don't fit in, in the, in the stage anymore, so we're looking for other places within the Hartford area to-
It has to be the Hartford area, right?
Yeah, I believe it is, yeah. We are, we're gonna be-
Maybe the Guard or Palmer Auditorium in New London might have, might have space.
Yeah, um, we're gonna be in New London on the August twenty-sixth, Pride Fest in Ocean Beach. So we're gonna be performing a song, a few songs there, I believe, from our spring, a spring concert.
Oh yeah, and the Green Party is planning to have a table there at Pride Fest. I think we missed last year, but we were there two years ago. I'm going to miss it. I'll be in Oregon. Our tr- we always, we go every year, we have relatives there. And the reason we're going during that period of time is so we can be there for the eclipse. Because, or, um, Salem, Oregon, where, where Bob's family is, gets the total eclipse on the twenty-first of August. So we kind of made our reservation, so we'd be there to-
That's beautiful.
See, see the eclipse.
So I'm gonna be there as a, as a Green Party member.
Yeah.
Promoting my, my nomination and I will be there as a Hartford's gay men chorus member.
Yeah, and, and, and two years ago, it was really a lot of fun. We, it was gorgeous weather and it was just really a nice day.
It's gonna be really an awesome day this year too.
I, I, I'm assuming it will be. Now, um, you mentioned New London, uh, green youth, uh, already, but maybe you can talk a little bit more about it. New London's had a Green Party presence since about, uh, two thousand one was the year that the New London Greens separated out from the Southeast Connecticut Greens because we were so focused on this city. And, um, but, but New London Green Youth is relatively new.
Yeah, so, um, um, I got a, a text message from Marina telling me like, there's this youth group that's gonna happen about the Green Party and you should join and see how it is and just enjoy the experience of knowing other people that are interested in the Green Party values, which are so important for our environment and our communities, right? So I was like, oh yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna join. And I have been part of it for, since it has been existing, which is like five months now.
Yeah.
So we bring, we meet at the Washington Street Coffee House. And we have conversations about the green values and activities that we can do to, um, let the community know about the Green Party and getting other youth involved within the organization too, to promote like future, future, um, leadership within the party, right?
Right.
Um, and then I think that's really important, like starting as a young age, as, uh, thinking about like, you know, I wanna make positive changes in my community through this, um, through this channel. That's really important. And I have, uh, have been, um, our last meeting, we hosted it at my home. And they were like, oh, we should do this, we, we should bring these up, like these ideas and meetings. So, um, our next meeting is gonna be actually out to the public. Um, we're gonna be showing a movie. And we're gonna be talking about our values, talking about recruitment, so new people can join. I will be, we'll be putting out a poster soon. You can follow us on Facebook, um, to New London Youth Group.
And, yeah, and you have a logo?
We do, we have a logo, um.
Which you designed, I'm told.
We designed, um, it was actually pretty easy to design, like Elijah was like, oh, so impressed that I did that right away. But it's, um, it's, it's an app that actually like does like, um, templates that are really quick and fast. So, um, we saw the leaves and we thought like the shape of the leaf represent the whale tails in New London. And at the same time, we represent the green values as leaves. And we just shifted it over a little bit and added the New London Green Youth, um, group. So it was really easy to make, um, but it's really like articulates with our mission and ambition as a, as a Green Party youth group. So we thought it was gorgeous and I look at it and it's like so beautiful.
It is. It's, and I'll tell you, many of us, you know, in the Green Party are older and, uh, and we're not really good at things like branding. You know, it sounds funny, but I, I really see, now, I wasn't really part of the, the New London Green Party in its very early days, but I was somewhat, you know, aware of it. And it, it was a very different process from what we're seeing the, the youth, uh, going through. And it's fascinating because you do some things a lot better than we do.
That was done on my cell phone.
Wow, yeah. And the other thing with the Green Youth, and I, I think this is maybe one way that the millennials in New London at least have something, uh, you know, something up on, on, on we old, uh, on us older people is, it's a very diverse group.
It is. Um, of young people with a lot of, uh, power too. So it's, um, and we are all in different career paths too. Three of the main members are in education. They're working in different schools and different area of the school system. Um, one other member is a, is a person that's a youth at Fresh and I'm a youth, we're both youth of the New London Green Youth, um, group. And I actually was telling them like, what is, what, what is our age limit? Like in one of their meetings, because I'm like, I'm turning twenty-five on August. And according to the United Nations, um, youth, um, they have a youth like protocol. They're, they only consider a person a youth until they're, they're twenty-four. So this is my, my last year in the, as a youth.
I think the National Green Party does have a youth caucus as well. And they also let you stay till you're twenty-five. So what you came up with sort of independently, I think somehow luckily turned out to be maybe not the same as the UN, but this, it is the same as the National Green Party. And now it's interesting to me because the Waterford Green Party was started by youth. And many of, of their officers are, you know, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Many of them just graduated college, you know, this past June. So it, it's great for me to see like the new generation just-
Stepping up.
Yeah, and becoming empowered because, you know, I'm pretty happy just being like an advisor, but like not out there so much.
No, and, and we actually appreciate that, um, having people like you and Marina like actually leading us, um, in some things. That's really important for us too, like that means a lot. Learning from others and, um, people that have been through the whole processes already is always important. Like we're, um, even as a youth, I could not consider an expert on the Green Party. Um, that's why whenever I have a question, I either go to you or Marina or any other member that have been, um, part of the Green Party for a long time. So that's really important, having you there as leadership. We appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate having you there and not feeling like we have to do this like forever until we're in walkers and nursing homes and, and stuff. So we only have about, uh, four minutes left. And, um, maybe you can talk a little bit about what, why you're running for Board of Education and what kind of issues, uh, you would particularly be interested in working on.
I will be, one of the things that I'm really interested in working on is curriculum and, um, bringing local history into our schools as a tool of keeping people in town. Like I believe like knowing our past and knowing our history is really important. And involving, um, history, historical organizations within our town with school system is really important. Knowing what, what we had done for the past years, um, knowing where our economy was and where our economy is. Like, kind of like a futurism and history combination of, of a class, right? And actually bringing opportunities that other schools and other school districts have, have in place. Um, like bringing nonprofit organizations into the school system as an after-school program, but that count as a credit towards graduation as an elective. And we don't have that in New London and bringing those things up. And having, having, um, students teaching other students and, um, learning about life experiences and having after-school program that involve the community and the diversity of our town are really important for me. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm looking forward to accomplish with, with the Board of Ed if I get, um, elected. Um, and another thing is that, like I said, starting the interview, I believe that with a better school system comes a- I believe that with a better school system comes a better community and with a better community comes a brighter future for everyone. And I think that really means a lot to me. And having experienced the school system here as a high school student...
Yeah, not that very long ago.
2010, yeah. So I'm working with Hearing Your Voices as a community organizer and learning other issues that I didn't necessarily face as a student, but others are facing, right? Like, and making those positive changes, not only as a leader, but as a person that I can advocate for others. Because I'm not looking to bring on my own platform, my own ideas. I want to bring your ideas into the table and I want to bring the community ideas and the options of how to make positive changes within our education. That's what I want to do. I want to advocate for others.
Now, if someone wanted to get in touch with you, what would be the best way to do it?
They can reach me out through any kind of social media, Facebook, my email, which is eric, E-R-I-C-K, carrion, C-A-R-R-I-O-N, ribera, R-I-V-E-R-A, at gmail.com. They can get in touch with me there. Or even like through my phone, I will put it out there, 787-587-2577. And if you want to talk to me about any idea, any issue that you want to bring up, do it. And actually, I will tell you to actually go to those Board of Ed meetings. Those are open to the public. And they're such a good resource for you to advocate for your kids, for yourself, for your community. And that's really important.
Well, thank you. And it occurs to me, we need to make an eric@nlgreens.org email address to make it easy for people.
For sure. Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming on to the show. Next week, our guests will be Glenn Chaney and Mark Patnode. And it's maybe on the surface a little bit of an odd combination, but Glenn Chaney has a publishing company and recently published a book of Mark Patnode's paintings. So it will be about art and publishing with two local giants in the field. So we'll see you next week and thank you again, Eric.
Thank you, Marina.